Hello, seat mate.
Good to see you.
Have a good lunch.
Chick-fil-A drive-through and then to daycare.
I should have something with chicken.
You and me both.
And it doesn't change with my daughter.
It's good. She loves, I love playground.
Everyone's up for the picture skit.
I'm about taking that bait. See, I know Mr. McDowell's on that domestic violence situation that's heard down. At the health care health. Oh, yeah, health care.
Yeah, it's domestic.
Yeah, so it's a serious. Yeah.
Right, right.
Where was it?
Yeah.
Doctor's office.
Yeah, yeah. Is it cooperative?
Right behind, right behind, right behind the free tabs.
Ah, okay, Leon called me and I didn't.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we know them?
All right.
I didn't get their names.
Are you ready, Rock and Roll?
I don't know that I can.
Crazy.
All right. Let's say manager.
Yes, sir.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And Kirk, could you please call her out?
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
Yeah.
Here. True to form. Council McDowell, bring us the word.
Come on, man. Just say two hours.
McDowell is not here.
That's what Duval.
Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the ability to swear in three new council members today and for the wonderful reception that we had from the people. We ask you to bring your wisdom to this council in the next four years and to give us guidance on how to make this the best capital city in the United States. We ask your blessing on all of us and for what we do on this day. We pray in your name, amen.
Yes, sir. Well, we certainly enjoyed the morning. Welcome back. And we're really excited about the new year staff and I had a great staff meeting of the year yesterday. Somebody talked me all about a couple neat ideas we have regarding the major projects y'all are already working on. Some additional ones to come. Moment of personal privilege, one of the new hires that I'm really excited about, you all have heard me teeing it up for a minute, and she started bright and early with her team yesterday morning, Ms. Tiffany Latimer. I don't know if Clint wants to make introduction of our new customer care administrator. We've stolen her from Piva and I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm sorry.
Where?
From Piva.
Piva.
So she is very still customer care matters.
Tiffany, so we're online, what's your cellphone number?
She does have a cellphone.
Because, because you'll see a surge and then we'll see all of our calls go down.
That is the plan, sir.
That is the plan. I don't think I've seen Clint's, well Clint smiles a lot, but, and I did too, but he's pretty happy.
He's pretty happy. I think as y'all know, as part of succession planning and kind of renewed emphasis on customer service in general and how we operate, Angela Adams has transitioned to a special projects administrator role and still going to be helping us and we honor her service for so many years in leading that effort, but we're delighted to have Tiffany Latimer as our new customer care administrator and the leadership that she is going to bring, the positive impact she's going to have on our customer service experience, but helping us in all aspects of our operation get better and how we communicate that with our customers. We're really, really excited. She has a varied, diverse background that includes retail, it includes state government, it includes call center experience. It's a perfect combination and management and leadership experience and we think it's a perfect combination to help lead us where we want to go. So Tiffany, would you like to say a few words to our council?
Hello, everybody. I just want to say that I am definitely honored to have been accepted for a customer care position. Looking forward to being our team. Going and doing a great job. Providing the great service that I know you provide for our customers.
Where you from? You're not from Greenwood or Abbeville anywhere? Where are you, where you from?
I'm originally from the island of South Carolina.
I was just curious. James Brown, James Brown. See, I say, okay, okay. It's all right, okay. Mr. Duval?
Tiffany, one of the things that Clint and his organization have done in the last few months is sent us a monthly report on the water report. I noticed on the last one, it was 23,000 touches, over 23,000 touches in that 30-day period in November and in about August it was over 30, something like 32,000 touches. When you start taking 23 and dividing it by the number of days that we are available, I don't know if y'all count the weekends, I probably do count the weekends, that's about 1,000 calls a day that come into customer care.
About 599 of them are coming to my cellphone.
They come to both the customer care and to the cellphone.
Keep sending them to him, it keeps him busy. Just forward them to him when you're not in the office, it works out perfectly.
I'm looking forward to the time when that 23,000 gets down to a manageable thing. There's no reason for 23,000 calls to come into customer service every year and I'm putting my great reliance on the rollout of AMI, which I think has been something that's going to really pay dividends for the city of Columbia and for the customer care and the council members that are dealing with questions and answer a lot of the questions.
Comment.
Sir?
I read, I read the report also. Do we have a way of maybe communicating or listing the outcomes of some of those? One of the things that, you know, I end up doing is trying to help the consumer sort of think about some troubleshooting as well. Do we know how many of those calls resulted in issues and problems on the customers line, their side versus ours, so we can take away, include that in? There's one thing about the call and the other is the response and the outcome.
Yes, sir. And of those 23,000 calls and touches, it's such a wide variety of different things that may be in my garbage, it may be a stray animal, a lot of times it's what's my balance, a lot of times there are things that if we have the appropriate tools, customers can help themselves with the phone system. So getting those tools correct and then collecting the data and being able to track that, counsel, is what you're getting at, is really important. We don't have all the tools that we need, that's some of the expertise that Tiffany is bringing to help us get those tools and so that we can track things better, analyze the information to learn, okay, when is the high volume, why is that high volume occurring and what was the outcome of those? And how can we get our customers using self-service apps, email, those types of things too, to minimize that wait time rather than just hire a lot more contact.
Man, how useful is the MyColumbia app being as it relates to the number of calls? And is there a delineating line to say, well, we've, we've used the app this many times and we've called this many times? So is any way to differentiate how many calls as opposed to how many times folk are using the MyColumbia app?
Yes, sir. We've got that data broken down by how the touch came to us. It's woefully low for the app and Robert and Tiffany are going to be talking about how to keep pushing that out. We do believe the early responses to the Island Water interface on the app with AMI have been very good. So we think that self-service and merging that part of MyColumbia and C app is important until we're looking to add that portal to our MyColumbia and C app. But we think those tools are the way of the future. It's getting our customers, still a lot of our customers either want to walk up or make a phone call and we need to be responsive to that, I'm not saying we don't, but if there's a way to make them even help themselves through the phone system.
They want to talk to a person.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I mean, that's what they do.
That's right.
That's, to them, they believe that that provides them closure or what, it's that human contact.
But I think the escalation of it when they talk to the person is where Tiffany, Clint and the whole team, Robert, is that, they're going to, we really have got to get laser focused on that because I'm very big on, as you all continue to hear me talk about this high performance organization, we have to be, is our call takers have to be empowered a little bit more to make judgment calls. They can't make them all, so it's hard, you have to be careful with staff on that, but I definitely think they can make more of them. The calls that escalate to me or to you, nine times out of 10 shouldn't happen. So they like to talk to somebody and they can, but when that touch needs to be productive.
Well, it, it needs to be very personal, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be, "Good morning, welcome to South Carolina."
It's a great day.
But at least that, the majority of the calls.
Actually, a great day in Columbia.
Columbia, yeah.
Just to make sure we get it correct.
Yeah, I mean, it would certainly be good, the majority of the calls, and I think Clint and I have had some of this conversation, being just pleasant on the phone, having those resources in front of you via a computer system, being able to answer those questions pretty quickly and pretty fast and not, and not get frustrated over the whole process. So I appreciate, it would certainly be good for me and I think for others, just to comparatively look at, how is the app doing and how can we best push that? Like Daniel said, I think that there are a majority of folk who just want to have that conversation over the phone, whether it's good, pleasant, bad or ugly. They want to have that, they want to have that conversation. But it would certainly be good for us to see, how useful is that app? Because I've referred some folk to the app and they've used it and it's been good results.
I think the thing continues to be, people don't know about the app. I mean, every time I go to a committee meeting and I do a demonstration, more than half the room says, "Well, we didn't know about it." And I know we've pushed information out, but maybe we need to focus more on the different things. I even did a commercial, I forgot about that.
It's on the radio.
So, but we need to continue to get that, yeah, market that out and I guess, you know, from there, if you continuously have something there and then maybe ask, then we can keep pushing out, but I, people I know that I tell about it, they love the app and they use it, but it's just getting more and more people to know about it.
And our out-of-city customers too, and then we'll, we'll wrap this up, but I know the Forest Acres Administrator Clint and the team went over, their council loved it. It's on, if you go to Forest Acres website, they have it scrolling, I think, on the, their front of their website, so we have to get to our out-of-city customers as well, which make up the calls too, and push it that way as well, because they do like it, I think, once they understand it.
You thought you were getting a simple introduction.
Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Talking to you.
Thank you Tiffany, thank you Clint. Mr. Mayor, at any point when you and council are ready, and I know Mr. Duval mentioned it to me today, so I did want to acknowledge reassignment of committees, Mayor Pro Tim, let me know when y'all are ready for that. With that, we will start our city council discussion. Lee, thank you for entertaining us for a minute, you were up first, but.
That's what I'm good for, entertaining.
That, yes, you are, always full of good information on our Columbia for Art, One Columbia for Arts and Culture Executive Director, Lee Snell Grove, to present the City of Columbia flag redesign.
Usually he's rocking one of his fancy Columbia hats, is that, is that a new hairstyle, man?
No, I mean, not really new. We got a fresh cut last week, but the hat's here. We're going to talk about that.
Looks tight, looks good.
We'll talk about the hat. All right, thank you for this, this, I hope this can be a fun conversation and something we can all talk about, our pride for Columbia about. So I am Lee Snell Grove, I'm the Director of One Columbia for Arts and Culture. Technically today, I think I am representing the Columbia Design League Board. I am a member of that board and they are the organization that I think spurred this with partnership of One Columbia. We help provide resources and it's in our mission as well to kind of focus on this. We started this project together with you all on January 10th, 2017. So we're, this is a long time coming, I'm excited about today, and that was with Resolution 2017-010, which essentially the council at the time, which is most of you all, approved the process for how we got here. And so I'm going to go through the process just a little bit, but I do want to kind of lead you a little bit along the journey of why this might be important. So around, I don't remember the exact date when Roman Mars gave this TED Talk, but it is a fantastic video to watch about why city flags are important and I won't make you watch the whole 12-minute video or whatever, if you have a chance, it's really worth it. But he really talks about the, the sort of point of city flags and why a city flag is often ignored and why maybe it shouldn't be. And one key part of this quote is just about how a great city flag is something that represents a city to its people and its people to the world at large. And when oftentimes a flag is either, a city doesn't have a flag or it's not well-used, other things fill that gap of how to represent those people. It could be a sports team, it could be a tourism board, or it could be anything else. And really, it's important that we have imagery that represents our city that we can be proud of to showcase both our pride within the city, but also our pride outside the city. Speaking of the hat, I mean, part of the reason I wear this hat so often is because it is such a different look for Columbia and people compliment me quite often about it and ask where I got it because they too are hungry for some imagery that represents them as the people of Columbia. I think we all feel a sense of renewed pride. Many of you said this morning, how proud you are of the city, how proud you are to be a Colombian and represent Columbia. So I think that's the intent here that we're trying to do is, is really create an image that represents all the people and that they can be proud of. So another thing that sort of inspired me, after I watched this TED Talk, I Googled the Columbia city flag just to see what ours looked like, because I honestly didn't know at the time, because it's only really flown in a few spots right now that are governmental spots. And when I Googled that and you looked at the images, only one of those was this Columbia city flag, the rest were of the Confederate flag, because that's how we've been defined as a city, whether we like it or not. And so I think part of the reason for having this process created was to redefine that, that we could tell our story for ourselves by identifying a new flag that represented us and we could be identified for something much more positive than what we've been identified for in the past. Thinking about our current city flag and all its sort of issues, it certainly violates all the design rules, which I'll get into a little bit, but also it really represents the government. I mean, it is a governmental flag, it has a great history, but we are not that city anymore. So it was originally adopted in 1912 and it was designed by a teacher, so it was a design competition very similar to what we've run here, Ms. Kate Manning. And I'll say, over the history of this, there are inconsistencies about what our flag is supposed to look like. So in this article in the state, it references a dark blue field, everywhere we fly it, it's a light blue field, I think, except for Chambers, so it's not even consistent how we're using it. And it's got the city seal, it's got corn, it's got cotton, yes, we have agricultural roots, but I don't think much corn or cotton has grown in the city anymore. And certainly cotton comes with its own charged imagery these days. So it's, that's why I think it's not being used. It also is light blue and I brought a little prop, this is the flag I put out, just to also show you, demonstrate how long we've been working on this. I put this out when we started this process, out in front of my office, and it's certainly seen better days and I've had to replace it already once, but it fades, light blue fades. The words can't be read any longer, but even if they were, if this flag was backwards, you wouldn't be able to read it. Words on a flag are not good because flags are two-sided. So there are lots of reasons why we should replace it and certainly a lot of people didn't even know we had a flag. So I think it's, this whole process is worthwhile. We, the Design League members took this on as a challenge because we want to value good design and encourage people to think about design of their city. And so we brought the author of this pamphlet, Ted Kay, to town and he introduced us with the five key principles of good flag design, keep it simple, should be just very simple symbolism, meaningful symbolism, two, three basic colors, no lettering or seals, and be distinctive or related. Distinctive or related means you might want to relate it to certain things, like perhaps you might want to relate ours to the state of South Carolina because we are the capital city, or we also want to set it apart from other cities in South Carolina and really define ourselves for it. So we invited Ted and Ted came to talk to us, he gave two presentations, I know Councilman Duval participated in those, we had a few other people, we had the folks at Experience Columbia, and then we also had a public session that he talked about flag design in general. He is a member of NAVA, which is the Society of People Who Study Flags. He also is a member of this group called the Portland Flag Association and they're the ones that have kind of taken it on to change city flags throughout the country. And you're not going to be able to see this map, so there are a lot of little dots on this map and these are all the cities that they are working or know of, cities working on changing their flags after that Roman Mars TED Talk and the inspiration that created. There are two dots in South Carolina, ours is one. Charleston apparently has indicated that they might be interested and I can certainly see why, their flag's terrible. It is historical, which is appropriate, it does reference the South Carolina state flag and it's blue, but nobody knows what that seal and could recreate that from memory or, you know, explain what all the parts of it are, or even really read it clearly, certainly on a flagpole, it's not good. That's, that's actually what's known as a seal on a bed sheet, an SOB, in the flag parlance. So we have an opportunity, I think, as Columbia, to really create a modern flag that no other city in South Carolina has. In a state where we have a really good, strong flag design as a state, no city has stepped up and taken on to represent themselves within that. So we can actually be, and I didn't do this myself, I stole this from somebody else, we could be a flagship city. All right, so the process. So the Design League, we had you all review what the process will be and approve it and then we launched into it. So we set up a website with all the details about what good flag design is, gave them that TED Talk, gave them a little bit of other information. We collected public entries in a lot of different ways, social media submissions, some were mailed to us, we collected some from schools by hand that were drawn in crayon, and we got 500. And we got 547 entries. And here is a video showing you all 547 entries that may not run. So, but it's just the running thing. We had a tremendous response from the public interested in this process.
Take support, I'd be interested in seeing that too. Just if... Is there a millennial in the room? Customer care, help us right now. Oh, is that what it is? Okay, all right, okay. All right, keep on, keep on rolling.
I can share it with you afterwards, but it's just a running video of all the flag designs. We took those 547 designs. We shared them with the experts throughout the nation. They pulled together some top people associated with NAVA. And they kind of winnowed down the field to, I think they gave us about 20 in response that they felt were sort of strong flag designs. They met all the criteria, they may have had the right imagery and all that. And then, the board and with the expert opinion took that down to 18. And those are the 18 that we put out publicly before and that the public provided input on. And we received over 7,000 responses to that public input. So, the public was offered the chance to go through one by one, give it a numerical rating and then talk about, you know, provide written commentary about why they liked it, didn't like it, what appealed to them. So, all that feedback and all that expert opinion went into essentially a jury review of people that sort of represented all kinds of aspects of the city, designers, historians. And we even had Ted Kaye still consulting at this time to help us and talk through all that. And we basically pulled the feedback, the input, all those various sources together and discussed it and came out with essentially a recommendation out of that, shared that with you all. And then I think, over the period of time that it's taken, we've come back to the idea that we needed more guidelines to talk about. So, what we did and what I think you all have discussed previously was a new process where we took the five top designers from that initial public process that we really dove in on and talked to them and offered them an opportunity to respond with more designs under more specific guidelines about the kind of images or the specific things we want to reference. You don't have to read all that, it's in your packet on the front page. And, but, I do want to make sure, emphasize that that first set of reviews is what informed us to find these people. They are the ones that had the top designs out of that. So, the guidelines we gave them were a little bit more detail about Columbia, but specifically focused on wing imagery. Comes from the John Gervais quote, comes from all the various other references, maybe the Congaree Swamp Fireflies, maybe the Columbia Phoenix, which is the newspaper following the burning of Columbia. And here are the five designers. They all do have some connection to South Carolina by chance. That was not a requirement of ours, but they do. Obviously, maybe they rose to the top because they all know the context a little bit better. And what we also want to emphasize is that this has been a blind review. We haven't really focused on the designers. It's been more about the designs themselves. I will say, all these designers are super excited about this and they're probably all watching the livestream of this, very eager to see what you all talk about today. And so, we gave them an opportunity to submit more designs. Certainly, they took advantage of that opportunity and they ended up giving you 60 designs, which is probably more than we anticipated. But I'm glad that they're eager and they've got that much inspiration, that's a good thing.
60 among the five?
Yes, well, combined. And I'm going to show you all their designs. But there are 60 new designs, yes, combined. And so, I'm going to present them in no particular order, but they are grouped by designer. You'll see the similarities and sort of what designers were indicating on. And I can talk more specifically about each of these and certainly in your packet, I think you have descriptions about the detail or what the designer was thinking about each of these. If you have a specific design in mind that you want to know a little bit more about, I think we can all tell wing imagery is obviously important because we made it important for them. Certainly, there are a lot referencing the rivers. There are a lot referencing some of the old flag. Stars often represent capital cities, which is where that comes from. Some are referencing the state flag. Some attribute different meanings to the number of points they have on their stars, whether it be the rivers or it could be other things like the number of districts we have or things like that. And some abstracted just a little bit more to wing imagery or river imagery. So, I will say, you know, these are designs, these are done on a computer. And while the designers should be considering what it will be like on a flagpole, as we create it on a flagpole, there may be reason to make some very minor tweaks design without taking away the core concept of it. And that is to prevent, you know, issues around fading or just make it clear and more understandable when it's on a flagpole. But minor, I can imagine, most of these should meet the, I think, meet the criteria for good flag design. And I think the other things I want to emphasize are all the ways that people will use this flag that aren't just on a flagpole. They won't necessarily just fly it on their flagpole outside their house or a government building, but they might actually put it on a t-shirt and they might put it on their car and they might put it on a water bottle or they might have a lapel pin, which I'm sure you all would love to wear, a legible city flag, real lapel pin. I've seen some City of Columbia lapel pins with the current flag and that you can't read them, you can't tell what it is. Obviously, the images are too small. And there are tons of applications beyond the flagpole. It could start to represent us in all kinds of ways and it could even be remixed. Certainly, when you look at other cities that have good flags like Chicago, oftentimes, brands use that to represent that they're from Chicago. They use that as a source of pride. Police officers that are killed in the line of duty in Chicago often use the flag on their coffin, the city flag, not the American flag. And then, in other places where flags have been redesigned, the Milwaukee flag is a good example. And I did not bring it up here, but there's a great Instagram account that shows you all the ways that the Milwaukee flag has been repurposed, whether it be in murals, in art, in store displays or other things because people are so desperate to show off their Milwaukee pride. So, I do want to emphasize how flag design often works. We all, if we were probably discussing the American flag design or the South Carolina flag design today, we might have quibbles with it. But because they're so old and we've used them for so long, they have so much meaning behind them that we can never encapsulate all the ways that people have represented themselves using that. And so, flags take some time. Perhaps, there may be some initial negative reaction or just people critiquing it. But over time, as people use it or it becomes more comfortable or commonplace, it will really start to have the meaning for all different parts of Columbia and represent all the types of people in Columbia. But it will take some time. So, it won't be immediate that everybody's like doing it. But we do hope to have a plan for how we can get more people to fly it, encourage businesses to focus on it, certainly make sure the city has it flying where appropriate, find ways to merchandise. We've already talked to some of our great, like, local product vendors and they are interested in selling these kind of products because, like I told you, my hat, mask, they sell out of these hats and other hats that have Columbia on it, especially ones that have a unique Columbia feel to them. And so, that's why it's also important to pick a good design. If it's simpler, if it has broadly meaningful imagery, something that really represents us and is exciting, then it will be quicker to get that sort of upswing of adoption. And we'll see it find plenty more places than we see the current flag. So, I think that, you know, this whole process is all in hope to build this sense of pride. And certainly, this process is kind of a metaphor of our city. You know, we've taken great strides. You all have worked really hard to make this a place that we all can be proud of, certainly in the last 10 years. And I think that it's time that we represent ourselves to the world in a very contemporary way and really change the narrative about the visual language in our city. So.
Excited. So, everyone has a comprehensive packet that needs to share with us. And now, we're at a point where I know some of us have been maybe more deeply involved in this process. We need to promptly make some decisions as to how we go forward. I've shared my thoughts collectively, I think Howard as well. I'm not sure if I've heard from everyone. I'm playing catch-up on mail and email as well. But we need to, we need to execute.
So, what would you like?
I told you which ones I like. And I think it'd be great, at very least, if we could maybe share our top three, our top three and the reasoning behind them.
I did not because I didn't receive them from everybody.
I think y'all sent it to the city. I didn't, so I didn't have it.
So, but at very least, we'll be able to trim it down to a third of that. If we, a third of that. Yeah, but why don't we do that? Why don't we at least do that, do two or three? Let's get those to Lee and then we have to have, I think, a collaborative discussion process. I think discuss it, do it publicly. I'm not sure if there's additional opportunity for more public engagement, Lee. I think we ought to think about the, think about the long-term.
Postherity. I mean, I've shared my thoughts with you all in written format, some of you orally, about the power of not just the rivers, but about this whole wings conversation. Senator John Gervais talked about under the wings of Columbia. That was a statement about inclusion, about diversity, about the cosmopolitan city that we would become, about tolerance. And I think having that imagery brought in in so many different ways, literally, there's dozens of different ways in here that that's articulated. I think going back to the very first slide that Lee highlighted on simplicity. And even, I've kind of got in the back of my head that even a child ought to be able to draw on his or her lunchbox, the image of the flag without having to get into a comprehensive art class. But meaningful symbolism that goes well beyond our lifetimes, laughs for posterity. I wouldn't, for example, focus on the four districts of the city. I mean, I don't think that's not who we are or what we're talking about. We're talking about basic colors, we're talking about real imagery. So, how about that? Yeah, how about that? Can we do that? And Taylor and Lee, I mean, so at least she'll have the, and maybe if you can pull together a document that highlights our seven considerations. And then, we can bring that back to us to kind of, or you can actually send it to us. We can work through it and plan to by the next meeting. To Lee and Taylor, Taylor can help.
And I will say, I think most of these meet the public input.
Those that might not.
Well, yeah, I can let you know what the public input has been to this point. And certainly, rivers were top of that list.
Yeah, rivers, absolutely.
I think so, they defined it that way. The capital city was very important to everyone, recognizing that. And certainly, I do think there was a lot of response to any time when something maybe referenced the wing. I believe that was part of some of the ones that we put forth as a possibility before. So, some people responded well to that.
I think, I mean, obviously, the rivers, and I'd say this to you now, I'll be quiet, Mr. Davis. I do think the capital referencing this as a capital state is so important. I prefer being referenced as the capital and not a subdivision of the state. So, and I think that's usually what the crescent moon represents. When people see the crescent moon, they see South Carolina. They see the state of South Carolina. And so, I prefer that being referenced in a star as opposed to the crescent moon. That's just my personal opinion. But let's share all those with Lee, Mr. Davis. Write your name on it too, write your name on it.
Trademark their flags?
No, so, the designers have agreed to, I mean, throughout this process, we've emphasized that essentially, that once this is done, the designs are completely open. They are not trademarked, they are not owned by anybody, they are of the people of Columbia. So, they are accessible to use in lots of different ways. We'll make that artwork available to people. And therefore, there are going to be opportunities for people to remix it or apply it to their shirts or use it however they want to because it's a freely open image to use. So, no, there will be no trademarks or anything like that. We are recognizing the designers for their work through this second round where the designers are being provided a stipend for this additional work.
And that's age tax, guys, we're all aware of that.
But then, also, the Design League and the Columbia Flag and Sign Company have pulled their money to create an award for the designer.
As a question of a minor change, let's use Mayor Benjamin's pick of number 59, where it has the star, but it has a six-pointed star instead of a five-pointed star that's on the state flag. Could you modify that to put the same points that the states have?
I think there could be discussion. It's hard to have that discussion when you've got like so many options.
I'm hearing consensus, man.
But I agree, I think that, you know, if you're just wanting to make some minor adjustments, you know, I know that that, among a few others, is a good one that might need some tweaking just to make sure it doesn't fade in a weird way. But, so, small changes like that should be able to be made with a designer. We'll certainly need to communicate to the designer, see where they feel very strongly about their design, where they might give. I would imagine, most of them will feel fairly comfortable with minor changes like that.
So, we could just put the numbers on top of this sheet here and just give it to you?
Sure, I'd be happy to take it.
And then, if you guys...
Or I can even just record it so you can keep the document if you want.
Yeah, well, why don't you actually, let's do both. Why don't you, let's give those... Yeah, give those, give those, this is what I like. Let's, you guys circle them, give them to Lee and Taylor. They can pull them back into a document that summarizes our considerations. Then gives us each a chance to spend a little more time thinking through them, thinking through the, these good flag, bad flag principles. You get some time, it's worth looking at Ted Kaye's TED Talk. Ted Kaye, right?
Roman Mars' TED Talk. He heavily quotes Ted Kaye, so they might as well both be together, but...
Yeah, so, and between now and the next meeting, we gotta get some time together, just kind of talk through those thoughts. But I think it's so important that we, it'd be awesome to make a decision this month.
Do you need it back? Well, I guess you do because you want to take an official vote.
I think so, I think so. And we need to spend some time, but, you know, having a thoughtful discussion about the stuff over the holidays is always very difficult as well. So, now, we're all back in full work mode. We'll spend some time, once we have the condensed document back, have some time to talk amongst each other and kind of get some consensus and...
You want it on the 21st?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
In the evening?
Yeah. And we may need a little bit of time on work session too because obviously, while we may talk to each other, if there's a group discussion that needs to be had, we need to make sure that's fully transparent. Everyone has their name on it so we know who's is who's? All right. Lee, thank you, man.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Taking the time for this.
Thank the Design League and One Columbia everyone for their leadership.
Good work.
Thank you.
The one without the name one is the preacher's kid.
I was just saying, Sam's the only one without a name.
Little country boy has you covered.
Okay, that was an interesting discussion, I think. Moving on, item two for the work session discussion is the HomeServe and Change Up Program update. We've got several team members across teams. Mr. Robert Yanity, Columbia Water Communications Manager, and Ms. Charmaine Clark, Community Liaison for the Community Development Department.
Well, good afternoon, I'm Robert Yanity, Communications Manager with Columbia Water. And I'm here to talk a little bit about Home Serve. Now, the partnership predates my time with the city. That's why we do have some folks that are here to help answer questions. We have both Charmaine Clark and Valerie Austin from Community Development as well as Gloria Said in the back. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the background and just some future-looking things. But the reason why we're here to talk about it is our contract with Home Serve expires at the end of this month. So, we're looking at renewing that, but we do want to look at all our options and I'm going to give you a little bit of history about it, some of which you probably know about. But in 2012, the City Council Environment and Infrastructure Committee requested the staff look into endorsing a water sewer warranty program. And I think part of this came from the fact that a lot of our customers at the time and probably moving forward just don't understand the responsibility where it lies as far as what part of the lines they're responsible for and what part we're responsible for. So, the city did its due diligence, they issued a... They issued a RFP in January 2014. Shortly thereafter, HomeServe was selected as the, the company that they would endorse. And the City of Columbia then entered into that agreement in 2014. Shortly thereafter, February 2015 is when mailings began going out to customers. I will say, the folks that initially did this partnership, they had some pretty good foresight. You probably have seen in the news, other entities nearby that have had issues with HomeServe. But some of our key points when it was developed was that the policy, of course, offered by HomeServe is optional. Nobody is required to purchase it whatsoever. And the city, unlike others we've heard of, the city has not given customer mailing addresses to HomeServe. It's truly marketing on their part. They essentially use a third-party service and they use addresses based on zip codes that are in our service territory. And of course, the city doesn't repair lines owned by the property owner. And that's where HomeServe comes in. And lastly, HomeServe marketing materials are not branded with the city logo. Again, a difference from what we've seen with others. The only thing that has a city logo is a letter that explains the program.
It's on the city logo.
Definitely not the city flag.
Customer cannot tell that that's not coming from the city of Columbia.
If I remember correctly, did we change it somewhere along the way? I think we, did we change course in that somewhere along the way in which we limited?
We have. Howard just does not like the program. And it doesn't matter what anybody says, he's not going to like it.
I think.
Exactly.
I think that. And, and you're entitled to your opinion, but I would like to hear Robert's presentation and to hear how the program has been going since we've had it.
Well, and I can pass around one of the latest mailings. As you can see, it comes in a blank envelope and there is the letter in there with the city seal.
Pass it around, Yanity.
This is, uh, from my opinion, it's, it's very well done. We do look at the marketing materials every time. They, they send them out to us for proofing before they go out. So, we do sign off on them before they get mailed out.
That is changed from the beginning of the program.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I remember.
Yeah, the return address did say city of, I think it said city of Columbia, but it didn't have the seal, but it said city of Columbia. Now, it does not have that.
Robert, I know you weren't here then, so, but I'm pretty sure that's accurate, how it evolved to what it is now.
What's that right there?
Yeah, that is.
The letter.
Let's, let's finish. Continue with the presentation.
I think they're, they're noted as our endorsed provider.
Yeah.
We have a relationship with them and a contract with them.
Sure.
And that's the reason.
Is that again?
Separate letter from the city is in the package.
But the actual Home Serve materials about the insurance program don't bear the city's seal.
Well, just moving forward, we have seen a great bit of benefit from the program itself. Just some numbers here. I won't go through all of them, but October, the latest numbers we have, there are about 11,000 of City of Columbia customers that are using the, using the program. And you can see since its inception, April 2015, when they, they started in, in full, water service line repairs, about 1,400, sewer line, 800, close to 900, and interior plumbing, about 1,800. So, about 4,200 folks have been helped by the program to a total of about 1.7 million in savings. So, these are numbers provided by Home Serve.
Robert, I have a question.
Yeah.
Who actually does the work under those numbers? Does our wonderful Columbia Water Utility come out and perform and get reimbursed? Or is it a private sector plumbers?
Private sector.
How do you get to the interior plumbing? I thought we only covered to the house.
Well, now, they do have a program that allows.
We don't cover anything. The program is just like you have insurance.
That is, yeah.
Because we're talking about the delta between where we stop and when private property begins, right? So, so, so the program does cover inside the house repairs as well?
There are different options.
Something.
There, there are three different options, as I understand it. I mean, you can have water line, you can have sewer line, and you can have the interior plumbing covered as well. It's a separate option from the other two. But that's.
Keep, keep on going, Robert.
Yeah, there are different pricing structures.
$58 a year is what I pay. $58 a year.
So, proud customer, okay.
Yeah, so.
My neighbor, my neighbor saved $2,500 by, by doing it. And they paid $60 essentially for paying a year upfront.
And I've heard that's what, under State Farm or other insurance companies, you're going to pay that same rate to add the service.
Was there, was there kerfluffle with Home Serve and Dominion or someone? We read about the paper. Similar concern, the same, similar complaint.
Dominion has a similar program, so I think there was something.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I did read about that. And I actually got that mailing from Dominion. Dominion, it's far different than ours. Their logo was on the, the envelope you got. It was on their marketing materials.
Same provider? Same provider, different provider?
I think it's their program. I think that's why their, I think that's why their logo is on it. It's actually their program. They administer the program, I think.
What are you going to do about Dominion Power?
What's that?
I'm just joking. Keep going, Robert.
It is Home Serve? Oh, okay. It is Home Serve? Oh.
It's, it's Home Serve. Yeah, I knew, I knew the answer. That's why I asked the question.
Well, then that clearly you don't know because when I got it, I figured it was Dominion.
Robert, you're doing a great job holding your head with this.
Thank you, thank you. That's why I'm in PR, I guess.
Yes.
I will say, customer satisfaction, it has been, our customers do, according to the research we've seen, gotten great reviews. And I can say personally, my, my parents actually live in four states. Prior to me working for the city, they, they took part in the Home Serve program and actually had a repair done, and they're very pleased with it. So, from personal experience, it, it really does what they, they say they do. Now, pivoting a little bit, one of the interesting things about our contract is that we get 7% proceeds, 7% of the proceeds from the Home Serve contract. That actually comes in to us and we use 100% of those proceeds to apply toward residential assistance, what we call our Change Up Program. And that's what the folks from Community Development, they're the ones that administer that program. It goes to assist low-income customers. And as of October, we've actually helped about 535 customers to a tune of about $118,000.
What's the process?
Uh, I would think Charmaine could provide, probably better talk about that than me.
Good afternoon.
Charmaine, the guidelines, too, like they can't repeat them.
Oh, yeah. Well, the process is once a customer calls in and they are not able to pay their water bill and if it's up for disconnection, customer service, we have a shared calendar, Change Up Program calendar that is communicated between Community Development and Customer Service. And they will schedule the customer on our calendar either on Tuesday or Thursday in between the hours of 8:00 to 3:00 o'clock. Once the customer comes in, Customer Care will provide them with an application. On that application, we have all the information and documentation that is needed for them to have when they come in. And I can share that with you as well. That is their last three pay stubs from their current job. If applicable, government benefits, social security, or retirement, proof of household income, of course, their water bill and disconnection fee and two copies of a proof of residence, driver's license, or electric bill. So, we utilize that. We calculate their information based on HUD guidelines for their income to see if they qualify. And then what we are here today is to up that income limit because we usually do 75% off, up to $300 off of their bills. And we usually have seen high-end bills. I'm talking anywhere from $500 to $1,500 or more.
Is it usage bills or leakage bills or what were we saying there?
A little bit of both.
Wow, okay.
And so, Clint and his staff in Community Development, we have been in talks for the past two or three months just to see if we can possibly up that limit to possibly 500, which Robert was getting to. But that's pretty much the, the basic guidelines when they come in. It's not a long process, but we just want to make sure that Customer Service give them the application, let them know what they need to have in that application, which is on the application of documents that they should have. And then they come in and we'll assist them during that time.
Is the 535 customers that are benefiting this program for the four years or is that just for this year?
No, for the four years since we started.
Four years?
Uh-huh. And on a quarterly basis, I, I got my numbers here. We usually see in between 150 to 220 customers on a quarterly basis.
So, the 500 is for four years?
Since 2017.
Since the beginning.
Uh-huh.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out, I'm, I'm figuring they're making over a million dollars a year on the program and they're paying us 7%. That's $70,000?
7%.
Seven?
So, the program?
Yeah.
7%, right?
7%. Say 7%. 7%.
$7,000, 7% of a million is what you're paying. Yeah. 7% of their proceeds.
But the guidelines, like the, the, these guidelines are our guidelines.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, we ought to have a big bank account built up. If my math was right, my math was off.
I mean, I think we have some money. That's why they're saying that we could probably, we could afford, we could afford to up it.
We could up it.
But that, but that 1.7 million is the million, is the money saved customers.
That's correct.
That's not, that's not money paid into the program. Those are two, those are two different numbers.
That is correct.
Yeah.
But our balance is around $150,000 in the account right now that we haven't paid out. And so, we wanted to make some changes to the Change Up Program, these recommended changes, so that we could help more customers and increase the amount that we're helping each customer that we touch. We're, we're sitting on a nice nest egg through the program, but we'd like to, we'd like to get that money out to customers and make it, revamp that program such that what comes in each year, most of that's going out each year. It's important that we are not receiving one penny. Every penny that we receive from this 7% of the, of the contract value is going to be spent on helping customers.
So, if you did five, if you did 535, what I'm at, what I'm hearing you say is that 535 number increases itself for the, for the sake of including more constituents?
Yes, sir. That is our goal. I'm sorry.
No. Well, no, go ahead because I just have a question about some of the recommendations and had you considered? Well, I was going to ask, have we considered also, because it sounds like the number of folks that are applying, there's, there seems like there's a number that's not qualifying. Is that because of income? And have you looked at whether or not we might need to change that, the HUD, not using the HUD guidelines? Maybe be a little bit more, you know, relaxed?
That can be a possibility.
On helping people. Because it sounds like there's a number of people who want, need to be helped, but under our guidelines that we're using, they're not being helped. So, I was just wondering.
The question is.
But we don't have to use HUD. We made that decision. We made that decision.
Is income considered or? Or do they say they're just overwhelmed for paying other bills?
Well, based on the guidelines, income is considered. But, you know, this is why we're having this conversation.
So, it's our option then either to go with HUD guidelines?
Mm-hmm.
Or just set our own guidelines?
Exactly.
Is that, can we do that? Ms. Said?
I think we need to use HUD guidelines as a basis.
Yeah.
But Gloria will explain the, the percentage of the median area income that we should use.
So, with all of our programs, we, we always use the HUD MSA guidelines in terms of income. It ranges from 30% up to 150%. And we use 50%. Okay. So, but we can.
Do we have some, is there some HUD skin against the CBG or any other?
No, it's not.
So, just, we're just talking about guidelines.
We're just using guidelines because we try to, you know, keep everything standardized.
Consistency is helpful.
Consistency, absolutely.
Skin is better?
Absolutely, absolutely. But no HUD, no HUD money at all. But just using their guidelines. And based on that, we currently, you're saying we're using 50%?
And tell us the number. What's, what's that income number?
So, um, at 50%, this is based on a one-family household. That would be $24,150.
So, what's 80%?
That's 50% of the area income from one person. It, it changes as you slide the number of people in the household.
Correct.
So, what's, what's, what's AMI on a, on a, 50% AMI on a family of four?
Yeah.
50% AMI on a family of four is $34,000.
$34,000?
Well, you know, a lot of times for our programs, we use, we kind of have that 80% and below.
Yeah, I was going to say, what about 80%?
We use 80% and below. And I don't have the chart with all the rates, but I do know for 80% for a one-family household, somewhere around $39,000.
Yeah, $39,000.
For a one-family household. And of course, it goes up higher.
Please, please. And by the way, this is a great, Change Up is a great program. I mean, regardless of how you might feel about, about, about Home Serve or what have you, I think some valid concerns here. This is a, the direct response, a policy response from council and staff to try and meet the needs of people who, who need help. And, and those needs have grown, not, not, not decreased over the last several years as we look at the income volatility and how cost of things going up, but, but wages are not keeping pace. So, so I think these considerations are real. And after Mr. Duvall's comment, I might make a recommendation so we can move on.
Uh-huh. If, if we had a customer that's not in the program, not in the Change Up program, but they have had a $500 bill or a $900 bill and they found out it's a leak, Columbia Water will adjust that. By, let's say it's a $500 bill and they adjusted 50%, so they only paid $250 for the thing. Or is Columbia Water charging you the $500 or?
Hopefully, that's, hopefully, that's the first, that's the first, the first.
Well, I hope we would have addressed those problems first.
You know, sometimes there's unexplained usage, but anytime there's any, any evidence that all of a leak or high bill like that, we investigate that as the customer comes. And usually, when it comes to Charmaine, all the adjustments have already taken place. So, they've received that fairly discounted water bill. And some are still very, very high. So, it may be an accumulation over several months, but we do our best to make sure any leak adjustment has been taken into account so we can preserve the Change Up funds as much as possible. We don't want to be using those.
If someone has accumulated, the $500 bill, just using it as an example, may not be just their one bill. That is probably an accumulation over time because they haven't been able to pay the bill.
That's where we get the higher numbers.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
You know you were sitting in the middle of a meeting, right?
Bill adjusted when, did that mean anything?
Is this personal? It was on the other side.
Yes, sir.
It needs 100%.
I, I, we'll find out. I'll make sure. That was September, I believe, so we'll, we'll make.
The moments when you think Chris Trainor has walked out of the room. All right, next, let's keep on going. I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'm sorry, Mr. McDowell.
Yeah, Charmaine, let me just ask you a hyper question.
Okay.
Tell me what happens when a person comes into the office, he or she is confronted with what we need to do to him?
Well, from my experience.
I know it's application.
Uh-huh.
What, what's next? What comes next?
And what's the turnaround, Tom?
What's the turnaround?
Uh, less than seven days. They'll find out if they were approved or not. Normally, they are approved. If they come into us, normally, they are approved because Customer Care, they usually go through the guidelines as well to make sure that they are approved to just come. And we do have some that just show up because they have heard about the Change Up program. But the process is, once they come through, they submit their document, the documentation, the proper documentation. We review the documentation while they are there. And we will let them know within the next few days, seven days tops, if they are approved or not.
So, if the water, if the water has been turned off?
Well, I will communicate then. If they are approved.
I gotta keep.
If, if they are approved, I will communicate with Customer Care that they are approved and that they need to be, have their water turned back on.
So so the collaboration with the program and with Tiffany?
Tiffany?
Uh, yes.
Tiffany, that that sort of collaborate, you all collaborate with each other?
Oh, yes, we talk, we talk on a regular basis, yes. We had someone earlier today had a eight hundred and sixteen dollar bill, and their their water was off, so we communicate that they were approved, um, and that they were just gonna put their account and stuff on hold and not turn off their water. So we always communicate that.
That was my question. So you say, if they're being referred by customer care-
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
And they know that they're gonna apply, could we not turn their water off?
Is it, oh, yes. No, I usually go out my way to make sure that their water is not turned off.
The first time it made it sound like people's water is turned off, and I'm like, well, it's seven days.
Well, I guess we can't say that across the board, because sometimes people don't until they know about the program, and they may be coming, you know, on the tail end and and, right. But in general terms, our staff definitely, we we, well, y'all know that. We do everything we can.
We're very hard not to turn the water off, yeah. We're very hard not to turn it off.
When customer care is referring a customer to community development for assistance through the change-up program, the account is put on hold, so that the water service is not terminated. Sometimes water service is terminated before we receive that. So I I couldn't say every time, but that is our our process, is to, is try to help these folks through the change-up program, get some payment made, so water service is not terminated.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
I I can't say, though.
So the bonus after Sam's comment, please?
We, uh, I've had, uh, good results with everybody that I've made calls on behalf of. And I think, as a whole, as a city, we we do have a good track record of assisting folks and making sure that, one, it's not their fault, it's our fault, or how do we work with them and not terminate services? That's the main thing that, um, we, I think we can stand on that. The record will probably will show that we do a better job of not terminating services, but working with somebody to get them to a point where they can, you know, pay the bill.
You're absolutely right, man. Because when that happens, it turns over into, it falls over into the other division, and you get all the, all the nasty calls. So if we could, if we could be just spot on, and, uh, like Clint said, if the water is already off, then we make a determination after you've done what you need to do for the pro, for the, for the, for the program, and turn it on as quickly as we possibly can.
Yes.
But it's on the, it's on that customer still, once they're in the change-up program, to go get the private plumber to come out-
Sure.
And go through the checklist that you recommend.
So if we had an adjective to determine, to discuss the accounts right now, it would be loquacious. We're talking a lot right now. Mr. Brennan, you had, you had the last word?
One last question. For the change-up program, can you give me a breakdown, percentage-wise, homeowners versus renters that that use, uh, use this program?
Between, it's half fifty and fifty. You have your elderly that possibly will have some plumbing issues, um, and you have some renters, um, that comes in and they're having plumbing issues, so it's it's usually half, it's not all renters.
Right.
Yeah, I I I support the recommendations. We don't vote, well, you probably already know, um, traditionally at at work session. Uh, so if they're, if whatever here might need official vote, let us know. Theresa, I would like to have an official vote, uh, if not tonight, at some point, to to potentially name the the fund after Deborah. Uh, I think that that's something that would be important to all of, but, Ms. Devine?
And I just, the, I like all the recommendations. I just wanted to maybe hold off on the, since we do have money there, hold off on the roundup and the education, because we haven't talked about the, um-
Summer jobs, summer jobs?
And I just don't want people to get confused on that. We need to kind of talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's that's fantastic. So let's hold off on the roundup piece. Uh, I would like to look at that for summer jobs as well. Um, I think we need to make sure, at least internally, I'm not sure what the process is, on the customer assistance limit. Uh, obviously, giving staff the discretion to make a smart and thoughtful and compassionate decision based on the circumstances, but also making sure you have some some boundaries to 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 look at any potential abuse. And we want to make sure that we, uh, we we had that in line, and defer to you all to make those decisions and and then, uh, be held accountable for whatever that that happens to be. So why don't we go ahead with everything, with the exception of the roundup? Um, love to have a a formal opportunity to name this after Deborah, um, at at some point, and, uh, so let's, whatever else might need to be on the agenda at some point, let's put it on there tonight or whatever. I think most of the stuff is probably things we can just do internally, I would assume.
When's the contract renewal gonna be put on the agenda?
It will be next meeting. Yes, sir, that is our plan for the next meeting for it to be on the agenda.
And if there's some way, I'm not sure if it's gonna be Deborah Christie Livingston, I don't know, uh, Family Empowerment Fund, the Family something Fund, just something that that references the the importance, the compassionate nature of what we're trying to do. I don't know what that change-up is, or why we came up with the name, uh, but, uh, we had, we had a bunch of up programs and, uh, is the, our our community development people, the masses of acronyms as well, I'm surprised that have an acronym name, uh, but something that, yeah.
So just, just housekeeping, if the renewal of the contract is on for next time, you probably technically need to have that vote, so whichever way you go.
So let's do it then.
And then we'll do it then, because that's the funding as of right now, so if you didn't renew the contract.
Sure, okay. Sounds, sounds good.
Yes, ma'am, that's important. If if we opted not to go with the contract renewal, um, Home Serve still has these customers. We just lose our seven percent.
Hmm, interesting, okay.
So, um, you know, that's why staff has recommended we have gone down this path, that we continue down this path with this provider, so that we can use those funds to help our customers.
Is there still a wood yard fund, y'all? Is it, does the wood yard fund still stand up, um, power bills in line? Don't see a whole lot of it like it like it once did, or we stayed as much as we used to.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I would like to see maybe some stronger, clear text on the front side of this. See it on the back that says, this is not required. I did get a lot of feedback from District Three on that. Um, you can cruise through Facebook and see the frustrations when it comes to that. I think Home Serve offers a wonderful insurance policy that is probably less expensive than your traditional insurance outlets. But again, that's that's on our wonderful customers to decide that. Um, and I see where it makes the offer, what's it say here? Check your insurance policy to be sure. I would love to see some some extra text on this side, um, since it is, it is promoted by the city of Columbia. That's, I would just like to put that forth. And Howard, I know you and I have talked about that.
Yeah.
And probably the same people have reached out to both of us on that.
A lot of them are in District Three.
Yeah.
Uh, and you need to read the newspaper clippings over the last six weeks about Home Serve. They've been kicked out of the state of Utah, they under pressure in many other states, and this this is not something the city of Columbia needs to be involved with. If if this is a good system, let the city of Columbia run it, and we can get out there and promote it.
We can't, we can't, we have not had the ability to service our own water bill issues and everything else.
With all due respect, guys, we can't, we can't, we can't service private property anyway. I mean, so that's, that's, that's not our idea.
And I agree with the mayor. Let's wrap this up. Howard, we know how you feel. The other thing is, for Mr. Brennan, since you're saying, read that, also, Home Serve is actually endorsed by the National League of Cities. They provide the National League of Cities program, which Howard used to be-
And they pay the National League of City just like they pay the city of Columbia.
Right, but so, but so could any other company who participated with our RFP.
Go through the process, absolutely, I get it.
Very extensive process to vet them.
But ColumbiaServicePlans.com is maintained by Home Serve.
I think, well, we'll just say that it's actually just purely about transparency, not 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 the program. He's talking about transparency and just making sure it's cleared, everyone knows this is not a Columbia, a compulsory Columbia program, uh, that-
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you all have any other feedback, if you all that just sported to me and Clint between now and, um-
Yeah, and this, so this is, yeah, so so this has been an evolution. I mean, I think, and Robert, you weren't here, where we started years ago. If there are any other concessions around transparency and disclosures that might meet Mr. Brennan's concerns, I think let's let's see if we can, if we can reduce that between now and then. If not, then, you know, he'll have to make a decision, but I think that there's a general consensus we need to execute.
Just just for administrative, we just approved the last marketing packet, but the next one that goes out, we can definitely get those changes in there for you.
All right. Y'all a tough bunch, man.
We'll have the contract-
We got to do two things so far, y'all, okay?
Moving fast, y'all.
Yeah. Twenty twenty's gonna be a long year.
We'll have the contract renewal and the-
Yes, ma'am.
Recommendations for the program.
Yes, ma'am, I'm getting, think of a a nice name.
I take my flag quick, though.
Hey, I love it, man, I love it, I love it, I love it. The, um, I think, are we ready to rock and roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to thirty dash four dash seven eight two meal share program, external funding requests. Receipt of legal advice related to pending threatened or potential claim pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy eight two Thompson versus C O C. Discussion of investigative proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct pursuant to four dash seven dash A four, ongoing investigation in the Golden Acres community. Discussion of the employment of employee pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A one, city managing city attorney evaluations, and municipal court.
There a second? Uh, is it?
The additions.
I'm gonna start saying, Duval? I'm sorry. The, uh, is it, is it a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion with the previous question? Kirk, call roll?
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, um, where we-
Mr. Mayor, we do have, um, video and audio as part of one of your discussions. We can do it upstairs, maybe better down here, but we can do it upstairs.
We do have a screen upstairs now, right?
We have a towel we can shove under the door, because Chris likes to lay on the floor and listen to it.
Let's, let's, let's take it, we do, if we, if we, if we have the AV upstairs, let's do it upstairs.
Yes, sir.
And, um, all right.
Upstairs.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Latimer, do not walk out of this building and go quit, okay?
He used to lean up against the door and act like he was just sitting there.
All right, all right.
Yes, sir. All righty.
It's about honesty and transparency, it's not about-
It's about hiding the towel under the door.
All righty.
Sam. Yes, sir. Please take it.
Hey.
Chris. Yes, sir.
Procedure later.
This is Golden Acres, boy, they looking for you. Yeah. Who? Ms. White?
I think we're staying here, oh.
You know, they had that. Are we staying?